Good, we're gonna start. Okay, if I can have your attention since it's five o'clock or one minute past. No, I'm looking at the wrong clock. I think this minute. We're gonna call a meeting to order. And first item up is approval of the agenda. Any changes, additions, additions? Okay, it stands as is?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the agenda? Okay, we have one. Approval of the minutes. And when you click on that, you're gonna see four separate minutes attached to this. I'm sure you've had time to look over it. Anybody need to back out? Or normally every month, somebody does. But I think we were all here for these.
Move.
Okay, I hear a motion.
Motion.
I have a second. Okay, and one's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved. And that moves us into the non-action or no-action. And the first item up is City of Washington, the capital item, and Mr.?
Rosschenbach.
Rosschenbach. Welcome.
I'll do this.
Chris.
Well, I've been drinking too much, so I'm just gonna turn my stairs. I'm still a good person.
You just take one and pass it, or?
Okay.
There you go, we'll do that.
Just keep passing.
Just keep passing.
Yeah, I'll win this. Pass.
No, the whole thing. The whole packet.
Thank you. Good job.
This is a whole packet.
Yeah, give us an action, we can send one down. Put this on Michael's box if it comes in.
And one more, just in case. And there's two firsts.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing myself. I'm Matt Rosschenbach. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the City of Washington. And Christie Robertson, she's the Director of Parks and Recreation. And I wanted to come speak with you briefly tonight. We, Christie and I, had a short session with Dr. Phipps last week and explained the situation that the city has faced with the pool and asked his recommendations. And this was it. So, where the city finds itself is not a new place this year. The funding for the pool, it cost us, literally, we have to, the city has to subsidize the operation about $300,000 a year. And it was during the budget deliberations last year it came up. And then a pool committee was formed and not a whole lot of positive solutions came out of that. And so, another year passed. Well, it came up again this year and we faced the same situation. It was about a $300,000 operating deficit. And besides that, the, there's a Dectron dehumidification unit that was put in when the facility was constructed, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years ago. And it's at the end of its useful life. And the service company, the air conditioning service companies told us we need to go ahead and plan for replacing that. And that's an additional $300,000 expense on top of the normal operating loss as well. Going through our budgets, and I know you guys are in the midst of viewers and working with the county too, but we just wrapped up our workshops with our council last week. And they funded the operation of the aquatic center, but not the Dectron unit, $300,000. And Christie and the pool committee came up with an idea and said, hey, how about if we have a fundraiser to show that the community supports it? Because last year, when the topic came up, it was discussed in the fall and the room was filled, the council chambers were filled with the community. You know, the Pake brothers were there, their swim teams, and a lot of community support was there for it. So, what the pool committee came up with is, how about we have a fundraiser? And if we raise half the funds to replace the Dectron unit, then would the council consider funding the other half? And that their council discussions during the budget, they said they would. At Monday's council meeting on the ninth, Christie's gonna formally ask for adoption of that resolution to fund that. And so, that's what this is all about. It's a capital campaign to raise money to replace the Dectron unit. Because the situation we face ourselves with is if it were to shut down right now, the pool would be closed for probably four or five months. We'd have to do the best we could to get the, keep the humidity down as best we can wipe down. Because you know what happens when you've got moisture and that much heat, you get mold and other issues. So, this color, the first page that was handed out is a color ad. It's a draft of an ad that'll run. I believe we got it scheduled in Sunday's paper. And it's to launch or kick off the Save the Pool campaign. And pretty much what we told you already, I mean, it's used for swimming lessons, exercise option, also for senior health, and not the least important, our schools. You know, our swim teams utilize that facility. And, you know, the team won the state championship this year. And, you know, this allows them a great option instead of having to travel to Greenville to do their workout. So, anyway, that's, you'll see that in the paper this Sunday. You saw, and those of you who read the Daily News saw an article on the front page this morning about the pool as well. The next page is just a little more written information. It's called Save the Pool Humidifier Fundraiser. It talks a little bit more about it. We already talked about the dollar-for-dollar match. Our target is to complete the fundraising by the end of this calendar year. And what I would like to talk to your board about is participation from the school system. And would, the city would like you to consider in your budget process a one-time capital contribution of $25,000 to go towards this $150,000 that we're trying to raise. And I don't know the proper way to do that other than to ask in Dr. Phipps if there's a special form that we need to send in or more justification if you need the estimates. We've got, we haven't gone out for bid on it. We just, we've got an estimate on the replacement cost from the company that we use to, who put it in the first time and also in service for us. But we're required on any purchases that large to go out for multiple bids, which we would at the appropriate time. But we would like to formally make that request of your board to be considered as a one-time capital contribution or any amount that you deem appropriate. If you don't have the available fund balance to contribute that, then any amount would be appreciated. The next item we'd like to, excuse me. The next item we'd like to talk about was the pool usage by the swim team. Currently, and we've had an agreement in place for a number of years, I can't remember the age of it, but.
I think it was since 2007.
Okay, so for about eight or nine years, we had an agreement in place that the school system pays for the pool time during the swim meets, okay? And that was, been a flat $1,800 a year. And we would like to ask the board to consider increasing that to $7,560 a year to also include the practice time. So, we got an estimate on the number of hours during the swim season and calculated what that rate would be. And that, along with the use of the pool for the swim meets, would increase your fee, I guess about almost $6,000. So, we'd like you to consider that as well. And the third thing we'd like to talk about is offering to the school system under corporate membership. This would be offered to, if you're interested, offered to all school employees. That the individual rate per month would be $25. That's a 30% discount off of our current rates. Our current rates, I think, are $35 a month for an individual. A family is just $5 more, so your entire family can enjoy the pool. And that's also a 30% discount. The application fee is typically $25. The city would waive that for your employees as well. And we've also contacted, Badant Health manages a wellness program for the city. And we've asked them to develop a wellness program around aquatics that we could offer as part of this program for your employees as well as ours. We've got a great discounted program for our employees to participate and utilize the pool. And we've got pretty good reception on that as well. So, if we could just leave this with you and Dr. Phipps, if you'll let me know what else is needed, what the board decides at the appropriate time, we would appreciate that.
We're a non-action, kind of received item tonight. And I think after the board has a chance to look at it, whatever questions we have, we can put you back on the agenda.
Okay.
Be able to address it there.
Okay, great. One last thing, if I could bring up, and this is not related to pool, it's related to fields. And it has to do, and that's the last page. And I apologize for the small print. I did that right before I came and didn't have time to blow it up any. But it has to do with the Coogler Field and also Eastern Elementary. The city, Susie Gray Complex, Sports Complex is short on soccer fields now. They wanted to do, we wanted to do an expansion on ball fields. So, there's a push for space. And I know this, you know, the city had, I guess, a joint use, for lack of a better word, agreement with the school board. And I know that the youth football league also. And so, the city had it for maybe six months of the year and the football league had it for the other period of time. And whoever had it, for which period of time, was responsible for the maintenance and the lights for the football fields and that. But, well, and first, let me say that this has not been endorsed by council. It's supported by the city manager. But I wanted to get the board's input on it, whether you would be interested in us pursuing that any further, and we could do that. But we would like to explore the possibility of a long-term lease, leases of one or both, the Coogler Field complex and also the big field on the south side of Eastern Elementary, the big vacant field. And I know that some groups might pick up soccer on the fields. But we'd like to build both of those two areas into a soccer complex. And Christie's got the person that's head of her building and parks and rec maintenance, measuring the fields to lay it out. And we'll do a schematic for us. But I just eyeballed it and I said, I figured seven soccer fields and it could be more, maybe less, but would be developed. The city, and I apologize for that, I should've shut it down. The city would be responsible for all of the development cost on it, responsible for all the utilities and ongoing maintenance of those fields as well. Because I imagine it's something that the school has to look after now, mowing the eastern and I'm not sure about the Coogler Field. Also, I understand that the high school soccer team is pressed for having places to practice as well as play. There's competition for the, you know, I played football in high school and college, so I get that too. They don't want, you know, and the fields need to rest as well. But as part of this, we'd like to set it up so that the high school teams could also practice and/or play on those fields. Because we plan to get them up to playing grade so that we can host travel tournaments and other things that the city's not been able to participate on, so.
Matt, one of the concerns that has come up with the board in the past during my time here has been the Washington Youth Football League's use and access. How would you work something like that?
It would have to be part of that, because that's a critical part of it. If it couldn't be fit in on that complex, then I'm sure we could set up something on Susie Gray so that they have a field to play on. Because that's, that would have to be a key component of this, so.
Any questions? Sure, we're more happy to take a look at this and discuss it. Surely on some of this stuff here, I think we ought to be able to have some ideas.
This is a good time. Yes. All right, thank you for your time. Have a nice evening.
And that takes us to, she's already up and about. This is our presentation from Sarah.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You have a screen behind us?
Oh, yes. So, we're gonna be looking at the screen right back here behind you. Just gonna take a little, just a brief description of things that we have available on our Beaufort County Schools app. This is something that more people are downloading every day. It becomes time to see the number rise. I tried this thing like four times earlier. There we go. We've had this app in place now most of this school year. A lot of folks are just discovering it.
Turn the lights out, I can't see.
It'll get even brighter here in a minute, but sure will.
It was on Earth, wasn't it, Sarah? I saw it.
It's coming to an end.
It's beginning to appear. There you go. It's up there.
Well, that's my phone, sorry. What you, when you go to the App Store, we have this available for us on Google Play and Android. And when you go into the App Store, you have to be very careful to make sure you select Beaufort County Schools NC. Beaufort, South Carolina also has an app by the same programmer, looks a lot alike. So, you wanna make sure you're looking for ours with the BCS box as a big identifier. This says open because I already have it loaded. So, we're gonna go to the App Live and just take a look around a second. You're gonna see some things repeated on my feed because I have multiple sources selected. I have our Twitter, our Facebook, so you'll see multiples. The joy of this is you get to decide what you follow. And when you first load it, it gives you a window just to click on the schools you want to follow or the district. Since I've already done that, it's not showing here. But you go through, and our home button, you see what we have selected is our top things, our activity string, which we select how that populates. That comes from Facebook, our news feeds from the websites, anywhere we choose to, we populate that stream. Your calendar takes you to the district calendar. And notifications are when we send out a message, each school as well as the district can go in when they send out their Blackboard call or alert now, we used to be known as calls. They can click a box and also send that message to the app. And so, they're learning that now. They're still working on that. Some are getting up to speed faster than others. So, that's what the notifications are when direct messaging is sent out. You see here some of the most recent events we've had going on. And I'm gonna swipe over and this is the same view everyone gets. A direct link to our Facebook. These are all direct links to our school menus. Big one that we added recently was the online meal payment. And I think that is still increasing as far as the number of viewers, number of users for that. Your directory takes you into the district and shows you who you can reach and how to reach them. If you're looking for who, I don't remember who the principal is, let me call down there and see. And so, this feeds right out, it takes you to each one. You also now can go on, and we have archived, thanks to some help we've had, each of the previous board minutes, meetings, excuse me. You can go back and click on any and watch them in case they missed it and just wanted to see what was going on that day. Also, our news feed, which you've already seen a lot of, this also populates photos that have been the thing that you have selected. This was this morning, we were at John Cotton-Taylor Elementary School for helping celebrate Child Nutrition Employee Week. And actually, this was yesterday, we went back today, Channel 12 was watching our feed, wanted to come to a story on the employees. So, it's a lot of benefit to the feed. You'll see some of our employees we've been featuring this week. So, the photos are just a thumbnail. Go back home at any time. The bottom parts are more parent-oriented for power schools. I don't speak power school fluently, but this takes you right into it from the parent perspective. Sports will take you to the max preps for the state listings. And then the direct link, how to reach the superintendent, and some of the other programs like Study Island. And to our YouTube channel, to our Twitter feed. So, if you get in here, you can go to Settings and then you can pick which school. Say if you no longer have a child at one school and you want to stop following that school, you can go in, you'll see one of four selected or different numbers. That's how many options they had to be following you. And let me show you what I mean by that. Every school has a Facebook page, which is only an outlet of our announcements. Most schools have a news feed, you have a Twitter feed, so they might have different numbers. When you see following two of four or three of four, is however many options to be followed that school provides. Any questions at this point? We have found this very user-friendly. Most everything, and we're still finding one or two former things that were, this started, we had our old web system. Now, we've gotten most everything updated to our new website and the ease of use is really good. We're still making it better though, we're still working on it. And we hope this is a busy parent's friend. When they go in, follow their school, they can also log on to their calendars. They can merge, say if they have, you know, a few different children, different levels, they can merge Eastern's calendar, Cotton's, and P.S. Jones'. So, they only get activities posted. It is key that the schools are posting the activities on their calendars to make this work. But we're continuing to improve on that. So, again, a busy parent, and I think back to my dad being a single parent, he would have loved to have something like this with two kids in school.
I have a question, Sarah. Because I love this app, when I download it. But my question is, when I, when I click on calendar, I don't, is that supposed to give you a school calendar, an individual school calendar, a county-wide calendar, or just today is May the 4th?
Right now, it gives you the district calendar. And we're so close to the end, we have not modified this yet.
Okay.
But.
So, it gives you that, okay.
Gives you the district calendar.
See, mine wasn't even doing that, but I hadn't done it, I hadn't clicked on it in a week or two, so.
And at any point, you can just hit reload. And if we've made updates, it should take this pretty quickly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I've loaded, but haven't used it that much. But I like looking around at it. I like notifications where stuff pops up on me. Who's, are you loading this, or are you saying schools are loading their events on here, or are you having to load it on your phone?
No, sir, ideally, what I do is I load the source it comes from. Say I load, it might be the Northside calendar. I load the calendar and then the feed stays live. As long as I've got the link correct, then it should be feeding into that. And this is where you're not seeing stuff in some places and you are from others where we're still getting everybody on board with this. So, once I load and make sure the link is correct and the source is there, then it's no work for me.
So, if you're, if you click on a school and there's no information, that's, they just haven't loaded anything for you to put, okay.
And it's not even for me to do anything with, it's just the source has nothing coming to it.
Right, okay.
So, has most of our staff gotten this loaded, you think, that uses this kind of stuff? I mean, are you, I mean, everybody knows about it in schools, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, we, our schools are doing it full. We wanna, we wanna put them in a higher gear and have more of that out there. And that's one of the things that Sarah's working on.
We had a lot of parent feedback. A lot of our parents are liking this and they're wanting to see more, which encourages me that they're downloading it. It is a free app, so anyone with a phone can access it at no cost, as we try to do with anything.
How long have we had this?
We got it early this school year and we've been slowly building it. And as time allowed, we, you know, we just had to use our time as we couldn't and keep building it.
Okay.
It's been in the paper a couple of times and we've had it mentioned on a couple of TV coverages for other things. But it's like something that's always gonna keep growing. And that's what we hope for.
Okay. Yeah. I knew, actually, I didn't know it was out there. And I asked a question one day and one of my daughters said, why don't you load that? You know. And I thought, what are you talking about? That's how fair.
And once we get the schools to where, it is, so you'll know, it's very little additional for the schools to do, to push their announcements. It is literally another click of a button. So, once we can get it in that habit, this helps our, maybe our non-parents and our community members who follow us stay more up-to-date with things like closings, delays, and things like that. So, we're gonna keep growing and keep, like any technology, we can always learn a place to utilize it. And, you know, we're hoping to see the schools grab hold. And they've had training now, once they have the time to really think about it, we can get it in these practices. And the pictures you're seeing are, we've been doing, the Facebook page had stories from our child nutrition staff all week. So, we've been celebrating this week for Child Nutrition Employee Week. And actually, it worked out, Channel 12 followed us. They were there today, said Mr. Ross from John Cotton-Taylor will be featured on Channel 12 tonight. Any other questions?
I'd really like to see us push our schools to start doing this stuff, because, I mean, getting more information out to people, it helps everybody. I mean, and then having a master calendar that puts everything in the calendar together, hopefully will stop things being on top of each other. It's just, you know, when you've got people involved with different schools and doing different things, and you've got events going on at two different schools the same night, I mean, especially for us, I mean, it's hard for us to go to anything when stuff's going on at two or three different places at the same time. So, I'd really love to see the schools get the calendar especially and then get notifications out, get their bulletins and their announcements and things out where parents can see it.
I wanna applaud Washington High School. They've worked really hard and their weekly announcements go out on their Facebook and through the app. They're a best practice right now and we've got something good to emulate there with the other schools.
Ask the way the future is.
Well, everybody, I mean, there are very few people that might have some sort of smartphone.
And the schools know all they have to do if they have questions, I'll just call, we'll get somebody there to help them.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's move into some action items. And appoint superintendent, I guess, or as an agent, I guess you could explain what that is.
This is what we do annually with regard to the federal programs. I'm gonna read what Greg had asked me to share with you on this, just asking for action on your part. The Beaufort County Schools Board of Education grants Superintendent Don Phipps authority to act as its fiscal agents in applying for federal grants and funds from the U.S. Department of Education for the 2016-17 school year.
Move approval. Second. Okay, a motion is second. I will ask, is there any questions? But I think we all understand what this is. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, another year, year day. Additional audit requirement by Lynn Harrell presentation. I have read through this and I still am not sure I understand it, so I will be listening closely.
I'm not sure, do you have a copy of the letter?
Yes, there is an attachment to it.
Okay. There are some new regulations from the federal government as to pension information required by how you have to account for it. Because of that, the State Treasurer's Office is requiring a random sample of entities, governmental entities, including school systems, to be audited on the information that we supply to the teachers and state employees retirement system. We were selected as one of the random samples this year to have the information that we send to the retirement system audited. It's one of those lovely unfunded mandates. We get to be. We get to be part of the sample and it's, our auditors have given us a contract for it. It's not a question of, we don't have a choice, we have to do the audit. I guess we could find a different auditor, but that would probably cost us twice as much because they're not familiar with our system. So it's not a question of us whether or not we can opt out, we can't, we have to do this. They quoted us $12,000 to do it.
When I said I didn't understand it, that's the one line that I called and I think I understood. That we were selected randomly and it's going to cost us $12,000.
That's correct.
How lucky can you be? I didn't understand the why, Mac. But I understood the you're going to do it part. And am I right on that? As you just said, there's not a discussion.
We don't have a choice, no.
Okay, so this $12,000 comes out of our...
Local funds.
Local funds, of which I'm assuming we must have, or you brought it to us.
I love the way they say, "We are pleased to confirm," I understand. It's just like, we've won something.
It's almost like they invited us to do it, except we're paying.
More government regulation requires more...
And where does that $12,000 come from?
It just comes from our local funds. We have to find the money to pay for it.
This year's or next year's?
It'll be, well, it will actually come from next year's money because they won't do the audit until July for this fiscal year.
So it's for the year we're in, but it's not going to take place until it comes out of our local monies for next year.
That's correct.
Seems like it ought to be this year if it's being done on this year's books.
You would think.
But we're on a basically what's called a modified accrual basis of accounting. That means for the most part, we're, it's not exactly cash, that's why it's called modified accrual. But if they don't have the, if they don't do the work until July, we're obligated until July. So the expense falls into next fiscal year. It really isn't, wouldn't make a difference if we were to do a purchase order for it now and encumber the money. It would just type $12,000 with the fund balance. So it really doesn't matter one way or another.
And so their time period was July, October. July through October is when they would be completed, I think.
That's when they're doing it, yeah.
So Ms. Harrell, what you're saying is we are selected now, there's a good, there is a strong possibility next year at the same time, we won't be on that list at that time.
I would certainly have not, no.
But what would happen if a small school system maybe not have that additional $12,000? And they got, what would have happened? Cause there's a lot of school systems that are...
I agree. And I don't really have an answer to that. I don't know what your, any answer to any unfunded mandate is when you don't have the money to do it. I tried to ask the question when we were first told that we were going to be responsible, that who was going to pay for it. And basically I was told that you're going to pay for it, and that was the end of the discussion.
Is it $12,000, do you think it's $12,000 flat for all of the other school systems as well? Or is it $12, according to the size of your system?
In all probability, it's the size of the system. And it's also, that amount is determined by our auditors. Like I said, it's, you know, if we chose to, we could have gone out and gotten other quotes or whatever. But I assume that we could. But somebody that hasn't done our audit is going to cost us more money because it's going to take them more time because they're not familiar with it.
It seems like a lot of money though.
It does. Gates is on here, Mike, they're smaller than this.
I guarantee you some of them are going to have a struggle with it.
They have to go through, there is a tremendous amount of data that's sent to the retirement system. And they're going to be checking all that data. It's people's names, there's a security number, how much they made, how much they contributed, and then the service that they had, what kind of service that they had. We transmit a huge amount of data every month to the retirement system. And they're going to be going through that data.
I don't even know why I asked the question, because you say we're going to have to do it anyway. But is this a lot of work requirements for you, additional work put on you?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you. Are they going to come here and do this?
Oh, yes, yes. Our payroll people will be pulling information and reports for them.
That was the question, how much more man hours or women hours, or how you want to say it now, is it going to take, you know, to do this?
Well, they're scheduled, I believe they told, they said for about a week, maybe. So our folks are going to be working with them during that time, whatever, just the same as our regular audit. Whatever reports that they need to be pulled to verify their samples, that's what we have to pull.
So this is to just evaluate our efficiency and catch any irregularities or just like any audit?
No, it's a separate audit required by the State Treasurer's Office, just purely for the retirement information that we send in. Because of new government regulations and how we have to present how much of the pension. It comes into play because they said that if your pension was underfunded, then they have to spread that underfunding across every entity in the state that participates in that retirement. And because of that, that's why if you looked in last year's audit, you saw something new that shows a pension liability. And that's what it is. It's in theory, our portion of the shortage of pension fund. And I won't give you my opinion of that, but that's where all this comes from.
Well, I'm married to an retired teacher, so that's, it's important.
Yeah, but they're auditing all this information to make sure that we are accounting for our portion of retirement system.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to accept this recommendation by Ms. Harrell, but I will reluctantly make one statement. This is another prime example, our state government, who doing the local school systems and asking us to do something but not helping us with the payment.
I actually really like that motion.
Second it or not, I agree with it. I got it off my chest, I just don't...
If that's a part of the motion, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. I think we've asked all the questions, but I'll ask you just any last questions. If not, all in favor, reluctantly say yes. Any opposed? No. I just, I just love it.
In many ways, we're all opposed, but...
Yeah.
Well, we can smile and...
They can make it much better, I'm sorry. Thank you anyway. We won't hold against you.
Thank you.
Just get them in and get them out, okay? Takes us to a capital update, Stan, I know that's what you're waiting for here, so you're up. There's a lot of attachments, so bear with us as we struggle to click and follow you along.
Would you want us to open first?
The capital update titled 1516.
Get right in order. Projects in progress is where we're at.
There we go.
Can you just briefly just spend some time on this other stuff?
Eastern Elementary Building, just update on it. Sheet Rock is in and completed, they finished the sanding. They are installing spiral duct work this week. Electricians are pulling all the electric terminations in the conduits. Past Friday when they were out, they installed the sewer main of the campus over to where the pump will be put in at. So that work across the campus has been done. Project's coming along great, very, very, very nice, it's going to be a great asset.
So we're still, everything's on schedule, we're still...
Still on schedule, we haven't got a actual date, brought that date from them yet, and that's all pending inspections.
This year's about over anyway. School year, I'm talking.
Southside Track Erosion Project, they've installed the pipeline, they completed hauling all the dirt in before the rain yesterday. They were, had started on building the boxes, but they definitely got run off yesterday because of all the rain that we had. Too wet, can't even walk out there at this point, by the day, so that follows my weather permitting. So probably put them in the next week before we go through.
It's a good thing you got trucks in there for the last couple of days.
Well, that's what, they went on to dump the last two loads of dirt, just so they would have some extra to finish the fire grading. And then they said they believe it on site for us to use in the future if they didn't use it, so.
And Stan, how many loads of dirt was that?
300.
No, it was 190. 190 to 20.
190, and they actually hauled in like 188 officially in there. And then he brought two more in to dump on site. And then he was going to put two over at the baseball field site on campus. So we could not do any damage that we have to do any more damage, so. Because they try to have track and field and all that stuff going on, and that's where they throw the discus and some other thing that goes on. There's a big event going on there this afternoon. So we try not to tarp that grass, where they throw the disc button or whatever the thing's called, they throw out there.
I forgot we were in the middle of the tracks.
Yes, so we didn't damage any of that area, we kept it very tight in the construction area, so not been interfered. Eastern Elementary Pub, 123 enclosure. MHA has actually been doing site work there, doing it ahead of our contract. And I just got a call from Mr. Rodgeloan just a few minutes ago. And there's been some little discrepancy in the contract between his secretary and MHA. But he said he would have it resolved by Friday and have us a contract. He said he would personally be in tomorrow and Friday and he would get it resolved. That's what I stepped out for a few minutes ago. And they've already done the design of the pipeline, they're way ahead, they've got the handicap ramp design. Where it's going to come around there by the modular unit there, MHA is working on it. So when they get the contract, they can pull the trigger and we get it out for business. Southside Cooper project is still scheduled to start June 20th. And Chaco Entity Middle School, this was a project that was on the capital. We actually did this in-house with planned operations by using our Harley rate, diverted some dirt and stuff. So this money can go back into the general capital, the $2,719 that was allocated, we didn't use any of it. Any questions about projects in progress? The next ones are action items and each one is titled bids in bid six. So you can look down into attachment and actually see bid six if you want to, we kind of have them written out here. So installation of a canopy at Bath Elementary to connect the 200 building over to the gymnasium. This work would be done by Tindles Home Improvement. The contract amount is $8,350.71 and we had $9,000 budget. We're going to go through all these and move it one time?
Run through them and then we'll jump over to the others. If anybody has any questions as far as looking at the bids.
Northside High School, bid number 11, that's the installation of a canopy on the bus entrance over the existing walkway. This is where the bus riders get dropped off. This work will be done by Tindles Home Improvement, it's in the amount of $17,508.33 and we had $21,000 budget. Southside High School was bid number 14, and it's replacement of VCT in rooms 138 and 152. Will be done by coverings by design, the amount of $4,429.75 and we had $9,000 budget. And the reason why that's deficit there, we did not put versus shield, because it's not a moisture problem. It was actually a mechanical issue that caused the powder to come up in those two rooms where the coals that leaked. So it's actually not any need to spend that money for the versus shield in those, we originally had planned to. But Northside High School, bid number 26, is the installation of a 1.5 ton mini-split HVAC unit in the Agshot classroom at Northside. This will be done by Advanced Air Solutions, the amount of $4,227.91 and we had budgeted $18,000. And the difference there was we originally planned to put a rooftop unit with the duct work. And they've come out with these mini-split units that you can put a duct, I mean, the mechanical part outside on the wall on the ground and run the line set, and you just have a wall mounting unit inside with no duct running, whole lot cheaper, much more efficient unit.
Are these the ones that you and I talked about, or is that a separate issue?
This is one of the type units, yes, sir. And it meets the requirements for that room. It doesn't meet the requirements of some rooms, depending on the size of the room for using these mini-splits. But I've talked to DPI, they're okay with us using them in certain applications.
I mean, I don't want to get too deep into it, but what I'd ask you about the air transfer, that handles.
Yes, sir, it meets the requirements for the air exchange.
Cause the difference in the money was so much, I just, I had to ask because I thought, you know, something's not the same here.
These are new technology and they can do a lot of things with freon and the rerouting of the high and low pressure systems.
Stan, Advanced Air Solutions, where are they located?
Followed here in town.
Here in town. All right, covering by design is here in town, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, I know Mr. Tindle is out of county, but did we have anybody in the county bid on these projects too? Okay, and...
Yeah, they're taxing your bids, you can see.
Okay, all right, so they're, okay, all right. I want us to try to support our local folks as much as we can.
Was there only one bid on the Northside Canopy?
Yes, sir.
That's all that's attached.
Northside Canopy, which one was that, bid number 11?
Yeah, bid 11. I'm only seeing the Tindles bid detached.
Other one was GW Walker, closing date was 19, it was bid on 25th, and theirs was $36,945. And all these canopies do meet the 110 mile an hour wind zone. I have the bids from the original, they did all go up to meet the requirements. And that means they have to all be in cement and has a steel runners and other requirements that has to go into that to meet the 110 mile an hour specs.
Are you still on the Northside one, butch? I'm trying to think of my question. Well, actually, the reason I say I'm trying to think of my question, move off of this one to some of the others. Some of the bids I can look at and make really good sense of. But the ones, for instance, like the one on Tindles, it's just hard for me to make sure what he's saying. All I'm trying to say is, I want to see that both the bids were for the same kind of work. And I didn't see the second bid for the one you just quoted. So I hadn't even had a chance to think about it, but as soon as you throw that figure out, you notice something popped into my head here. Why would one be twice as much as the other? They just, they can't be for the same thing, can they?
It's the same distance, same square footage, same posts?
Okay.
It's not, it's not.
Can I see GW Walker's bid?
Cause that's a bid tabulation, I don't have a bid sheet. I just got the bid tab sheet. We can table that whole...
No, I mean, no, that's just a question right now. Which walkway is this butch, you're more familiar with?
It's the one on the back, right by the cafeteria, coming in from the bus parking lot.
So when you walk out, when you come in the front door, if you walk straight through to school, it's going to be at the back door? Cause I know we've talked about it before.
Yes, it was in the original construction and got valued engineers somewhere to be just like the front one, all concrete or brick.
I saw you say you go way out, but I guess you go 150 feet out, cause it says 157. But you go way out and the buses are off there, off to the right.
Sunny days, they just park, on rainy days, they pull up and drop the kids off as close to the camp.
So this would carry them to the...
Yes, sir.
This was the one that I was thinking I had a question about. Was it covering, I was thinking that walkway was wider.
It is wider, but with our stand to make snow loads and everything else, we can't make the canopies that wide for the monies that we have. The walkway's about 15 foot wide.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, I've actually been out there when, I've been out there. I knew it was wider than that. What's, what's everybody's favorite about that?
Well, I guess, was GW walkers to cover the whole sidewalk? 16 foot wide sidewalk? I'm seeing a yes back there.
I'd say there's got to be something.
They didn't bid apples to apples.
The spec was written for eight foot and drawled and that's what was sent to both contractors, so. I have them all, still got them in my folder, I can break, let's table this one and make them back later.
Well, we got some others, we've been talking about them.
It should have been, I don't know why it wasn't in that folder.
Lynn's already looking at it. Do you have any questions on here, the other bids in the board? For instance, the canopy.
That's the one with the canopy down the middle one, then...
Yeah, that's the one, but she'll get that information. I'm just saying while she's gathering that for sake of time, do you have any questions about any of the other ones on here? And then we can...
No, my main concern, I think the same for the rest of the board, I want to make sure our local people get the opportunity to bid on all this. And it falls where it falls and everything, but I want them all to be bidding on what needs to be bidding on. That's all I'm saying.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, I thought we had mentioned that at a meeting earlier, is why I asked Stan about covering the whole thing. I understand what you're saying, if you go 15 feet, that's going to be a whole lot different. But before I covered half of it, I might not want to cover any of it until I figure it out. You know what I'm saying?
Revisit and look at it for apples for apples.
Cause you're not going to get them for the end school anyway.
What did we actually have?
We won't have enough monies to do... We won't have enough monies to do it.
That's why I said we only had 21,000. We had 21,000 for. So we may have to, what does that say in backup and punt?
We've got quite a few that we're going to have.
I mean, I just hate to see it because I've actually seen some before where I've been, and you have this big walkway, and they cover it down the middle, and I don't want to be that guy that gets blamed for, he didn't have enough sense to cover the whole walkway. You know, I mean, it just doesn't look right. But I understand the money side. I realize we're caught between the old proverbial rock and hard place. I get it, but.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we go back and revisit that?
Well, that's what I said, but we might, if you had, if everybody had any question on the others, we could go ahead and cover those and.
We'll bring that one next time.
Okay, let me back up on my. Okay, so what we're actually looking at right now is bid 6, 11, 14, 26. And bid 11 is the Northside. So we can handle the other three.
Yes, sir.
And then hold off on number 11. Is that what you're saying, Matt?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions then about 6, 14, 26? Because if not, we can go ahead and approve those and move on.
Move and approve, sir.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve 6, 11, and 26. And when I look at those, just last thing.
6, 14, 26.
6, 14, 26. Thank you, C.
And I recuse myself from a vote on that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Wouldn't do any good if I did.
But those came, I was looking at the budget, they came in under budget. One was nine was under, one was nine, I mean, bid was 40 something is under, and the other one was also under.
One quick question on the Northside one, the HVAC. Why were we budgeted so high and to come in so cheap? Are we doing less than what we originally planned?
Yes, sir.
It's a different system.
Putting the, we originally planned to put a rooftop.
Okay.
You all were talking about it.
Yes, I was. You all were speaking, I was speaking numbers while you all were talking.
It's a different system, but I'd already asked him, when I saw that, I had a question too, and already asked.
Did it meet the air change requirements?
Did it meet the air exchange requirements? Because as long as it did, I don't mind that we put in a less expensive unit.
Yeah.
But I wanted to make sure we were getting what we got, and he says he's checked with the offices, and they say it does, right, Stan?
Yes, sir.
So we're good with that?
That's correct.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second for those three. Is there any last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so keep up with Lisa, what we were doing. On bid 11 for Northside, do you want, let's just sit like, let's just move that off to the next meeting, and let's have time to discuss that, because I'm still playing it off in my mind how to get the, all of it covered, rather than just cover part of it. Everybody okay with that?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Do we need a motion for that?
Well, it is an action item. Do I need a motion?
Motion table.
I'll motion to table bid 11 to the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table number 11. All in favor, say aye. Approval of projects and funding, let me move down on my sheet here. Okay, that's the fire lane. We've already discussed that two or three times.
Yes, sir. This is actual the road from the projects behind Eastern Elementary over to the school. We did put it out for bid locally. It was bid number 42. Eastern Elementary Fire Lane will be constructed by Dudley Landscaping in the amount of $24,500.
And as you've told us, we can't occupy the building until we build the road.
Yes, and he says he can meet the deadline.
And how did this come to pass? Because I spoke to Mark, and it was on the original, he did specify.
He specced it, but.
That it had to be there, so.
You were calling a person out. One of the other city officials did not pass it along to our architects. And that person, when we had our meeting, did not show up to the meeting either, so.
Never got to the architects.
But how, if he had it on there originally, how did it not make it through to somebody?
Mr. Wayne Harold, City Inspector, did not pass it along to the architects. The chain of command from the City of Washington is from the Fire Marshal to Mr. Wayne Harold. Mr. Wayne Harold failed to submit the email to MHA Works.
Because it seems like we're eating a mighty big chocolate.
It would have still been in the money, but it would have been, it would have added additional cost to the contract. We're just having to go back and revisit the contract, but.
Stay it right into the spec.
We may have saved a few dollars by condensing it all under one, but.
In the end, you're glad.
We still have to pay for it.
Yeah.
I think it shows the need for us to have contingency on any of these kind of projects.
That's correct, in the future.
I see what you're saying. It didn't get written into the specs.
It did not write. MHA did not, in their defense, did not receive it to put it in the specs, so therefore, when it went out for bids, it did not get bid on.
Okay, right.
Dr. Phillips, this project did not have any contingency whatsoever?
I'm not sure what our line item was, but I don't think it did.
We were trying to get our number so close and get in our budget that we didn't put it in there.
Because we went back to the drawing board two or three times.
Yes, trying to get our occupancy, where we can meet the class requirements and to get the building for the size that we did.
Okay. But I know in other projects in years past, we've always had a percentage for contingency, that's the security plan.
Okay. So I was just, I wasn't stalling. I was actually figuring out something. Because I'd seen on the other items that we approved because of the HVAC system, it was over $20,000 where we were under there. So I hate to say this every month, but that comes out of fund balance.
I make, I make a motion to approve bid 42.
Did you, was there?
No, there wasn't a question. I was just happening to be looking at you when I said that.
Okay.
I hear, I hear a motion and.
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? So now we should be able to hopefully get in the building.
Yes, and I spoke to Mr. Dudley, and he said he can make it happen to meet our June deadline that we're trying to get so they can have graduation on site.
Gotcha.
The chair people also said they would have the chairs available for the June deadline if we, if we can make it. They said they would have them ready for delivery, so.
Okay, explain these, well, let's see, what else was there?
That's it.
Says other projects.
Yep.
There's three, yeah, he said it was it for him.
No, this, actually, just to update, we can give you update on.
It wasn't over budget.
Yes, these other projects, this ain't here, just a bid project overview of it, is John Cotton Taylor, which was bid nine. The front canopy bid came in at $9,804.59, and we only had $2,700 budgeted. Chaco County Primary School canopy for the 200 building to connect over to the gym, the bid was $7,028, and it came, we only had $6,300 budgeted. Bid number two was Chaco County Middle School Bandroom Soundproofing Project. This turned into a much larger project, being to that the rooms were originally shared between an educational space and what was a welding shop. And it wasn't just a wall, and the actual wall didn't go to the roof deck. There's a big void, so once we got there, it wouldn't just put in the sound bat and around the room. It was actually going into the offices and a lot of others. So we definitely will have to increase the budget on this project in the future if we decide to revisit it.
Okay.
There was also two more that didn't get noted, and I talked to Dr. Phillips. He said I could just mention them. It was Washington High Schools to air conditions, and it was actually bid number. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Bid number 27 was the replacement of eight and a half ton air condition, and the bid came in at $11,100, and we had $10,100 budgeted. And that's in the admin area. There was a second unit, a 12 and a half ton unit at Washington High School in the admin area, and it came in at $12,885, and we have $12,500 budgeted. They were very close, but.
I felt like it was important to bring all of that, number one, to be transparent, but to pick one or two that were close and not pick the others, I just feel like if we go over budget, we need to make sure that you all know where we're at, and if you give us the go-ahead, we certainly will do that. I think with two big projects closing out the fieldhouse at Washington and the multipurpose room at Eastern, I feel a little more comfortable knowing where we stand, on a little firmer ground as we get near the end of the fiscal year, and then decide if we want to go back and do some of these that came in close to budget, or if we decided to do something different. But we didn't want to not mention them to you, wanted you to know where they came in at.
How's the board feel about that?
I think it's important that we finish those two big projects.
Okay, can you put these on to a future meeting so we won't forget about them? And I mean, after this other work is completed.
We'll keep them on our regular capital sheet, and we'll just, we'll have them on there with those bids, and we can always go back and revisit them.
Okay. Okay, so that'll take care of that. What is this other project about the transportation deal?
The transportation canopy, due to the height that's needed to clear the top of the bus and the canopy up, nobody makes a canopy that 18-foot high to withstand 110 mile an hour wind and our load zone. So that project's kind of out the window. It's not possible without building a permanent brick structure or brick and mortar, so.
Okay.
And Eastern Elementary bid seven, EC Modular Canopy. It actually came in within budget. It was bid at $5,739, and we had $6,000 budgeted. But this on it would be built right over where the storm drain pipe's going to go out and where our new handicap ramp's going to be all built. So it's kind of senseless to put that up at this time and then have to take it down or remove it or change it. So we'll just hold it to once we finish the bathroom project, and if it still works, then we would re-present that to you for approval.
Okay. Okay, Lynn, a question I would have. I understand what we're saying on these, but the amounts that is budgeted and put into our capital that we approved, what happens with the dollars? Now, I mean, I'm not saying we've even collected all of our capital from the county, but I'm saying when we make a request and they approve what we are to spend, and then we decide not to spend a certain amount of money, what happens?
It goes in your actual fund balance.
Right.
It falls into fund balance, and it will be re-appropriated next year as fund balance to cover the projects when you do them next year.
Okay, and I knew that was going to be the answer, but I wanted to hear that because my next question is, do we not have an obligation to, on any amount, does that county commissioners show? Yeah, I mean, that we've taken money that we, we've asked them for a project, they approved the money, but we're not using the money?
At this time, but I'm hearing that it may go to fund balance, but it sits there encumbered on that project?
Well, it.
No, yes?
It sits in that project. It's not actually encumbered until you do, you award the bid and do a purchase order. But it stays within that project until and unless you move it to something else.
Right. That's where I was headed. Because some of the projects we may not go back and do if it doesn't meet the requirements. But it just seems like we would have some responsibility to notify on money.
That's another thing, too. We don't need to linger on some of these projects if the money goes back into fund balance right now, because there's a strong possibility, of course, prices will go up again.
That's right.
So if there's something we desperately need to get done, we, as I go back to my favorite little saying, we may have to rob Peter to pay Paul to get some other projects done, but, you know, especially during the summertime when we don't have students around. But, you know, we're going to have to kind of switch them off as much as we can and.
I would hope in the next 30 days that we would have the MHA, I mean, the stuff back from MHA be put out for bidding, and we would know where we stand at Eastern in the next 30 days. I hope we can have the bids back and know where that project's going to be.
And then we can get a better clear picture on some other things can get done.
Yeah, and that's a great point, because I was just, while you were talking, I was looking, and it was $4,000 for one of these, and that would be money that on those projects we just set aside. If we find out Eastern's okay, we finish it up, that's enough money to add 1,000 to the air conditioners at Washington High School. I think one of the canopies was only $600 short.
I think we ought to try to go ahead and work on that if we can, if it's.
As soon as we find out.
Yeah, so can we make sure we bring that up within, like he says, 30 days? We should know more about Eastern.
As soon as we get the bids back, then we have a great idea.
And then we can cheer out two or three more projects, Matt.
That's right.
I think anything we don't do, I think we need to let.
Right, if there's anything, yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't want to just set on projects and not let them know.
I was glancing through the bids. Do any of these contractors on the work that we've, that we're tabling because we're over budget? Or do any of the contractors have expiration dates on their bids, like?
Most of them stakes.
Do, I've read them on there.
Yeah, most everybody stakes 30 days.
Because that could, I mean, we may end up having to go back and rebid these jobs, and they may be higher again.
Well, we have meetings coming up in the next two weeks, so I don't think we'll be at the place we need to be with Eastern yet, but we can always bring it back up.
Yeah.
If I could mention, you always do have an option of going back and negotiating with the low bidder. If you're, if you're over budget, that is an option.
Okay. Can you take that advice and let us know, just see? Okay, and in the meantime, we'll find out more about the Eastern, and then we'll see. Great advice, Lynn, thank you. Anybody have any more questions for Stan?
On the soundproofing of the bandroom, you only got one bid?
Yes, yes, sir, there was only one company.
I don't know who else you can get to do it.
Well, there's another company that we were talking about, Southside, because a couple of them expanded their project so far. They brought it out. We asked for sound batties and wall panels, and they went extreme, and I asked them to break it down in bids, and they just threw it in one lump sum. So there is another company that is going to be rebidding some of these other jobs that, and they're included in Chaco County Middle as in it to TC Sound, which is local, and then the other ones out of Raleigh, I think that's going to be bidding on them. And he said he would be sending a bid. He sent me an email that he would be sending a bid, so.
Okay.
But if I can negotiate these numbers on these other ones with the low bidder, then that's losing information.
Okay. See you next time.
Thank you.
Close session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321 and student records under General Statute 115C-402 and 20 U.S. Code 1232G.
And here's our motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now back out of closed session and open session. And first item up, we need to approve the personnel agenda that was just discussed.
So moves, Chairman, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, personnel agenda date May 4th is approved. And calendar, if you'll pull up the attachment. Actually, I show only two meetings, but I believe our superintendent wants to talk to us about something.
But, yeah, I felt like, based on just some conversations that we have had with the commissioners, I'm not sure where the recommendation proposal's going to come in for the budget there. But I felt like we need to go ahead and pick a date to have a chance to get together and talk about that. Their meeting, I think, Monday to get the proposal from the county manager, and then we have some ideas of, you know, where things fall for us and whether or not we get to a budget hearing. But while you're here tonight, I want to see if we go ahead and pick a date, and then if it turns out that we don't need to do anything at that point, we can certainly cancel. But much easier now to plan in the future than do it on the run.
Okay, can I ask something first? On the 17th, would the board consider moving that to Monday, the 16th? And I'll just say, I haven't asked you to move one for me before. I try to use that to my advantage.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Not only inconvenience you about it.
I've got a conflict, but I, I could, I'll try to reschedule that.
What about Thursday?
Yeah, I just said Monday because it was available.
I can do Thursday to 19th.
All right. I know right now, that's fine.
What about you, Mr.?
Okay, which, which day, Tim?
Oh, you can't do the 19th either?
Just want to leave it there.
Is your conflict in the evening?
Yes, yeah, 6 o'clock. I can, I can reschedule that.
Are you sure?
Can we bump it, can we bump the time up? Can we bump it up?
Well, that's the, that's the public one.
Can we go to next week?
But what's on the 18th?
You got something?
He can't meet on, oh.
James, we bumped it to the next week, the 23rd on Monday. Anybody got anything then?
No, I can't do that either.
Well, if he can reschedule Monday, let's go back to the Monday.
I just hate to.
Or can you, that's public recognition.
Yeah.
So you can't move that, but so early, but we could move, we could do everything but...
Change, drink, yeah, moving, it's not gonna help me any, I, I'm moving the time, it, I'll just say, I'll just have to reschedule what I've got on Monday.
Aye.
The sixteenth.
So the sixteenth at five-thirty?
So everybody's still gonna talk to you about that? Five-thirty.
Lisa, does that, does that give you time, um, to notify, I guess, have they even picked the people yet? Okay.
Um, all right, Dr. Phipps, Doc, Mark, are you or Dr. Phipps gonna be here on the sixteen?
Yep, I'll be here.
That's when our meeting's gonna be, yeah.
Okay.
On the sixteen.
It's gonna be on the sixteen, okay, what about the seventeen?
You don't have to be here.
I don't want you here.
No, I mean, they won't, oh, you mean for, no, we, gotcha.
I don't mean I don't want you here, I don't mean like that, I'm saying...
I know what you mean, yeah, I heard that.
I'm saying, well, I, I, I need, oh, the superintendent, uh, here, that's what I need.
Mm-hmm, I'll be here on the seventeen.
Okay, all right, can I do the minority hiring on the seventeen?
What time?
This one, uh, five.
Okay.
Okay, what date were you looking down?
It's really up to your, I, I don't think we need to do, do things too early, I think the week of the sixteenth or the week of the twenty-third, if there is a date there that we could get together. And again, we may not need to, I don't know how things are gonna transpire, but I don't, I don't want to be scrambling at the end.
I'd rather go to the week of the twenty-third.
I got a little...
Let's just check that, say that thing on the twenty-third.
I'm not as late as the twenty-sixth, is that too late? Or, because we got early college graduations, twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, be the earliest I can do it.
Okay, because the twenty-fourth is out because of graduation.
Washington High School's got their awards ceremony at seven, but I think if we came in at a reasonable time, it won't take, it won't take that long.
When is that?
On the twenty-sixth, what time can everybody get here? Five-thirty, five, five-thirty?
Can you do five o'clock?
I, I can, but I'm checking which.
Twenty-six?
Five o'clock. Twenty-six at five.
And boot oil?
That'll be another budget meeting, but we'll, 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 we need to change that down.
Another budget meeting?
Anyways, it's the same night as awards night, but that's not till what, seven?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, we start at five, we'll be done by the end.
Okay, okay.
So that makes three meetings for, for me.
Yeah, so next time, we're back to the, to the sixteenth.
Sixteen, and the seventeen.
At least I'll send something out, I know she will. She always does.
Sixteen, and the seventeen.
What are our tentative, do we have tentative dates for June yet? We don't need to, I mean, we can do it later.
Seventh and twenty-first.
We're gonna need to do the twenty-first.
Seems kind of late.
Yeah, we need to push the twenty-first back probably for the end of the month.
We can talk about it one of these, we need our next meeting. Any, uh, board member updates?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, please, let me, let me hit you right quick. I, I want to say that I was called to a board of directors meeting on Monday, and please allow me to say hats off to our superintendent, Dr. Phipps, thank you for what you do for us. I feel that you've been a great leader, and we thank you for that. Terry, I want to say thank you for what you've done for the board, how you're keeping the diversity out of the board, and also, I want to say thank you to the members of this board for allowing me to go and represent you as the board association, school board association. It's been a great board, this is a good board. I tell you it's a good board, when I hear, just this past Monday, when I heard, all that I heard about the boards across the state of North Carolina, I want to tell you that this is a good board, and there is no organizations anywhere that does not disagree, but we are so good that we can disagree, we can agree to disagree, and that's the good part about it, but we find that the superintendent's is getting bad, and we're glad to have him, because he listens to us, and we're so glad of that. And I just had some good remarks on, um, on Mark Don over there, who I try to check on regularly, and I let them know that, um...
Don't compliment him too much.
We were about to be friends, so, uh, I think that's good for Mark over there.
Very good.
But, um, I want to just give you a little, the, a couple of things that we discussed at the, the meeting, and that's very important, and I, I don't know how many of you that have read the House Bill Two. If you haven't read it, I, I recommend that you read it, there is a section in there that talks about the, um, one fifteen C? That we need to know what's going on in the school systems, we need to know that. Uh, of course, the Superintendent Association has voted, um, for us to try to get out of it, and also, that was our vote to our, uh, lobbyists on this past Monday. We asked them to check it out, and if we could get out of the discussion to do that, but if the OCR come in to ask, we asked them if they would repeal it, try to repeal it. Uh, there, there's also a, a bill that's, that's, uh, pending for the moratorium for the school board. Uh, superintendents don't want, I mean, the county commissioners is not wanting to be sued, so they are trying to do that also, so we don't want that to happen, but this is my last year. And they, they did, they had a little, some stuff in there about the charter schools, okay? So, uh, those things, we were asked to kind of keep those closed, because those bills haven't really hit yet, and we, they want to make sure that they are factual before they hit the, uh, outside areas. But this, like I forestated, this is my last year on that board, I'm rolling off this year, I'm gonna miss it. I really am, because I feel that, that it's, it's good to be there, it's good to be there, and somebody needs to be there to represent this board. I don't know who's interested, but somebody needs to be there to, to represent this board. And again, thank you, I'll be there till November.
We really appreciate everything you've done.
What did they say about the charter school, they say, you think about? Yeah, they did, they said, they said something about it, and, and what, really what's happening is that the charter schools is just, or, I mean, they are trying to, to work on that fund eight, fund eight. They're trying hard for that, you know, and they, I, I don't think anybody, anywhere is against anybody sending their children to charter school if that's what they chose to do. But the fact remain is that, let's, they, they are asking to be fair about the situation. If you're gonna separate yourself from the public school, then take care of your responsibility. That's it, that's the whole thing, with the charter school.
Thank you. Just so you know, the thanks go from us to you.
Yes.
Because I, I know how much you're up there, and how much time you spend, and I'm not sure I would be able to do it, so we certainly appreciate you looking out for us, maybe we can find a way to twist our arm and keep you up.
I would love for you to, Terry, I would really give you a pat on the back.
You might better try that. Mr. Chairman, I think this being election year, and she's already lobbying, campaigning for another term, so I think we ought to try to put her back up there, because I sure don't want to be up there.
Is there a limit, like, two years?
Yes, it's, it's a four-year term, and because there's so many, uh, systems or districts across the state, they try to give everybody the opportunity to serve, you know. Uh, I may not be on the board of directors as a representative of, of a school board member, but, um, I was told Monday that they were looking at getting me a placement, so I don't know exactly.
So you can still represent?
Yes.
Superintendent updates?
I echo what Ms. Booth has said, I think the fact that, that we're invited and asked to, to speak at state level is important. I'm gonna be in Durham tomorrow at, at a conference, and they've asked me to be one of three panelists speaking about assessment reform, and I feel like it's important for Beaufort County to be represented, for northeastern North Carolina to be represented, but that's a topic that we're doing quite a bit of work on, and I know the public's looking at the things that could be done to, to make assessments and the models of assessments in our state better. Uh, I wanted to share this, this is a trophy that we rec, we were recognized with last week, and it, it says the Agribusiness of the Year Award for two thousand and sixteen, presented to the Beaufort County Schools by the Beaufort County Farm Bureau in recognition for exemplary service. And it speaks to what we do in terms of ag education, but specifically the work that's been done in the Ag Expo. And Lisa was there, Mac was there, and Sarah was there as well to, to, uh, receive the award, and I just wanted to say this is an award we all share together, because of what you allow us to do and the time and commitment that goes into things like this that help our students and make our community a better place, and we proudly accepted this, and we'll have it on display for the public to see. But wanted you to be aware of that.
Ms. Booth was there in the audience, too.
That's right. She's everywhere.
She's everywhere, I mean.
Anything else? If not...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Dr. Phipps, we...